Call to order the meeting in the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, November 28, 2017, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:42 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Marisol Kiana, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, none. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. invocation tonight will be given by Mr. Marshall Kendrick and the pledges by Ms. Marisol Kiana.
While we come to you thankful for the many blessings of life, we thank you for the way you watch over us, and sometimes we're not very grateful, but we thank you for all that you do for us, for the grace that you pour out. We thank you for this district, we thank you for the leadership, and for all the people who work so desperately hard to make sure that our students have an opportunity to succeed in life. We thank you for their effort, we thank you for their dedication, most of all, we thank you for their love and care for our children. While we pray to be with us tonight, as we go through items for this district, as you give us the sermon, help us make the right decisions, we pray for those that stand the line and the gap for us around the world and locally, that are first responders, as they protect and stand for us. Father, we just ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the flag, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The board is going to continue and finish our team building training session, and then we will, Personnel Committee will meet in room L101 to convene in a, wow, what is this? I don't even know what this is.
We have no personnel.
Oh, no personnel tonight and no policy, so we're just going to, are we going to go into executive session for any reason?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so no executive session is required, we're just going to finish our team building training session, and we will return by 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. We're going to reopen our meeting, we're returning from a short recess, and first order of business is discussion of state financial accountability rating for 2015-16. John? Is John here?
Yes.
He's outside somewhere.
He must have thought we were doing special recognition first, so...
You ready?
Yes. We got our star of our show missing.
Diana, did you get a look?
Sorry about that. You're on first, sir.
Who's on first?
Excuse me for being tied up outside. Real quick, good evening, it's my pleasure to be with you here this evening to present our annual financial accountability report. The 2016-17 ratings for our report are based on our annual financial reports provided by TEA to districts and charter schools based on the 2015-16 financial data. This year, the first ratings are based on 15 financial indicators, such as administrative cost expenditures, the accuracy of the district's financial information submitted to TEA, and many financial vulnerabilities or material weaknesses in internal controls as determined by our external auditors. Based on the submitted information, districts are assigned a rating of A, Superior, B, Above Standards, C, Meet Standards, and F, Subachievement. Pasadena Independent School District has earned the rating of Superior for the 2016-17 ratings. This extends our rating of Superior Achievement to 15 consecutive years. I'm going to jump to page eight of the report. In the report, there, the first section of the report has to do with critical indicators. These are indicators that look at your, was your financial report submitted timely? Does the district receive a clean audit report? Did the district have any findings of weak internal controls? Was there any default on district debt? Did the district make timely payments to other governmental agencies? And was the district's fund balance greater than zero? And naturally, we passed all those indicators clearly. The other indicators of financial responsibility pertain to, did the district have adequate cash and current investments sufficient to cover operating expenditures? Basically, did we have money to pay our bills when they were due? Indicator seven was the ratio of current assets to current liabilities adequate to cover our short-term debt, of course. The ratio of total assets to long-term liabilities was adequate to support long-term insolvency. Indicator nine, the revenue in the general fund equaled or exceeded expenditures, and the district had cash on hand greater than 60 days of operating expenditures. Indicator 10, the district had adequate debt service revenue to cover our debt payments. Indicator 11, the amount spent on administrative cost was 15.6 million below the state standard. And here again, that's something that we can really pride this board on, and is a jewel to this district, 15.6 million dollars below the state average. Indicator number 11, the district had enrollment growth and did not experience a 15% decline in students to staff ratio over the past three years. The actual expenditures that we submit to TEA in PMS was 456,394,559, and we had a variance of only 240 dollars due to rounding of odd pennies in our expenditures. Thus, we provide aggregated data to TEA is what that's telling us. Indicator 15, the audit report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, and federal funds. And the district did not receive an adjusted payment schedule for more than one fiscal year due to overpayment from TEA as a result of a financial hardship. Another area I'd like to draw your attention to in the report is on page 13 where it talks about awards and recognitions. I'd like to credit Nina Conway and her staff for continuing to earn the various awards for budget and financial reporting with Government Finance Officers of America and ASBO. Moving on to the report, there's the next few pages as required, we have to publish the superintendent's contract in here, and after that, we have some statements we have to publish that shows what the reimbursements were to board members during the last year, and if there was any business dealings with board members, or gifts received by board members, et cetera. That concludes my report. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them at this time.
Anybody have any questions? John, thank you, and the entire group, the entire department for always bringing us excellent reports.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.
At this time, we have a lot of students that we want to recognize, and so, Dr. Powell, if you will do the honors, please.
Well, after that great financial report, we do have some students to honor tonight, and we have over 100 Pasadena ISD students who have earned scholastic awards from the College Board for their academic performance during the 2016-2017 school year. This year, two students have been recognized as National Merit semifinalists, and one student has been recognized as a commended scholar in the National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are the highest-scoring students in our district on the PSAT exam. Nineteen students have been recognized as Hispanic scholars, and this recognition is also based on the students' performance on the PSAT exam. We have 342 students who have earned the designation of AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, AP Scholar with Distinction, or AP National Scholar, and international AP Scholar by the College Board, in recognition of their exceptional achievement on the college-level Advanced Placement Program exams. A representative from each of our high schools will now come forward to introduce their school's honorees. We'll start with Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, board members, good evening, parents, good evening. We are honored to begin this lineup this evening and to share with you the students from our Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School. We've seen tremendous growth in our AP program at CTHS, and only our fourth year, over 700 tests administered, and almost 450 of those students taking exams and earning qualifying scores, and so we're honored to begin this group this evening. Dr. Tom Lee, our Senior Assistant Principal's going to come forward and call the names of our students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our first student is Alexis Hernandez. She is an AP Scholar with Distinction, National Hispanic Scholar, and she is one of the two National Merit Commended, I'm sorry, not one of the two. Recently, Alexis had the opportunity to get her research paper on brain plasticity published in an international magazine called Pioneer Research, and she was only one of four United States students to ever be chosen for that distinction. So not surprisingly, her plan is to become a neurosurgeon. Our next student is Travis Ho. He's an AP Scholar with Distinction. He's our president of the National Honor Society, and his plans are to go to UT and become a pharmacist. Our next student, Kevin Lee, is an AP Scholar with Distinction. He is one of the National Merit semifinalists. He scored the highest SAT score, I'm sorry, SAT score ever in our history, and also, he is a treasurer of the National Honor Society, and his plans right now is currently to become a biomedical engineer. Our next student, Lisette Diane Montemayor. She's an AP Scholar with Honor. She's also a National Hispanic Scholar, and she had a NASA internship. She also competed in the NASA Space Settlement Design Contest and placed first in that. Adrian Alexis Perez. He's an AP Scholar with Honor. He also competed in the same competition on the same team as Lisette, but he also came back and competed again, and he also took first place again. He also plans to be a mechanical engineer, just like Lisette. Luis Santana, he is an AP Scholar. He's also one of our two National Hispanic Scholar. His plans after going into the military is to go ahead and become a physical therapist. He's undecided, just because he's just good with everything. Luis Miguel Damayo, he is our AP Scholar with Honor. He's also our 12th grade representative for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council Committee. His plans is to become a pharmacist as well. And our last student, our only junior, meeting the distinction here with AP Scholar with Honor already as a junior, is Rudy Villatoro. He also plans to become a mechanical engineer. Please give a round of applause to all of our students. Thank you very much.
Can we have the parents of these students stand?
If you are a parent or family member of one of these students, would you please stand so that we could recognize you as well?
I'm Kerry Sink, Assistant Principal at Dobie High School. Last May, we had 782 students taking AP exams, and 485 of those students earned qualifying scores. So very proud of all of them, also very proud of these Dobie Longhorns here tonight, as they, and the recognition that they receive from the College Board for their achievements. So, first student that we have is Daniel Batello. Daniel was recognized as an AP Scholar with Honor. Daniel plans to attend San Jacinto College and major in computer science. Our next student is Roberto Campa. Roberto was recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction. Roberto is a junior and plans to attend the University of Michigan and major in music. Our next student is Maritza Hernandez. Maritza was recognized as a National Hispanic Scholar, and Maritza plans to attend the University of Houston. Our next student is Hong Li. Hong was recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction. Hong is a junior and plans to attend Northwestern University and major in chemistry. Our next student is Victoria Palos. Victoria was recognized as a National Hispanic Scholar and AP Scholar with Honor. Victoria plans to attend either St. Mary's University, the University of Texas, or Texas A&amp;M, and plans to major in mechanical engineering. And our final student is Cecilia Torres. Cecilia was recognized as a National Hispanic Scholar, and Cecilia plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in public health and nursing. So would all the parents of these students please stand up and be recognized as well?
Good evening, I'm Dr. Steve Martin, Assistant Principal of Pasadena High School, home of the Mighty Eagles. Like to present to you a student who has qualified as a National Hispanic Scholar, as well as an AP Scholar. Her name is Guadalupe Zuniga. Guadalupe is one of a number of students. We had 819 students taking the AP tests, 482, excuse me, 819 tests, 482 students, and the number of qualifying scores was 234. Twenty AP Scholars, one AP Scholars with Honor, and one AP Scholars with Honor and Distinction, and one National Hispanic Scholar. And I believe Guadalupe has some family, and her mom's here. If Dr. Chan please be recognized.
I'm Amy Duke. I'm the AP Coordinator at Pasadena Memorial High School. Have the honor to introduce our students tonight. We had 559 Mavericks take exams, 1,033 exams, last year, with 397 earning qualifying scores. We had 61 AP Scholars, 10 AP Scholars with Honor, 13 AP Scholars with Distinction, one National AP Scholar, six National Hispanic Scholars, and one National Merit semifinalist. Our first student is Melissa Anderson. She is an AP Scholar with Distinction and a National Merit semifinalist. She plans to attend Rice University and study for a degree in microbiology. Next, we have Nina Contreras. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University, where she plans to study for a degree in mechanical Next is Blas Estrada. He plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin, where he plans to earn a degree Next, we have Mariano Garcia. He plans to attend Columbia University and earn a degree in biomedical engineering. Next, Jose Martinez, a National Hispanic Scholar. He plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and study architecture. Next is Jake Miller, an AP Scholar with Distinction. He also plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and study political science. Next is Min Nguyen. He plans to attend also the University of Texas at Austin and study business administration. Next is Ms. Jasmine Nunez, an AP Scholar with Distinction, also planning to attend the University of Texas at Austin and study mechanical engineering. Next is Mrs. Darshi Patel, an AP Scholar with Distinction. She plans to go to the University of Houston and study chemistry. Next is Antonio Rivera. He plans to go to Stony Brook or Binghamton University and study biology. Next is Luis Sandoval Garcia, an AP Scholar with Distinction. He plans to attend Rice University and study astrophysics. Next is Edisa Vasquez. She's an AP Scholar with Distinction and a National Hispanic Scholar. She plans to attend the University of Houston Clear Lake and study healthcare administration. Next is Mark Vasquez, an AP Scholar with Honor. He plans to attend Sam Houston State University and study political science. And last but not least, Ms. Adriana Savala. She plans to attend the University of Chicago and study environmental science. If you are one of our parents of one of our awesome Mavericks, please stand so that we can recognize you guys as well.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Burke. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Sam Rayburn High School, and I'm very honored to announce our AP Scholars. This past spring, we had 584 students take AP exams, and 268 of those students had qualifying scores. Our first AP Scholar is Sergio Castillo. Sergio is a senior who earned a qualifying score on six of his AP exams last spring. He is interested in aerospace engineering and plans to attend either Stanford or the University of Texas. Next is Dante Eskamia, National Hispanic Scholar. Dante is a senior student who earned a qualifying score on five AP exams last spring. He is interested in majoring in business. He's applied to Harvard, Yale, Columbia, Dartmouth, Duke, the University of Chicago, Rice, and Princeton, and he has already been accepted to Baylor and St. Edward's University. Next, we have Giselle Hernandez, National Hispanic Scholar and AP Scholar with Distinction. Giselle is a senior student who earned a qualifying score on five AP exams last spring. She is interested in majoring in biological sciences and statistics. She has applied at the University of Houston, UT Arlington, the University of Southern California, Northwestern, University of Chicago, Tufts, University of Virginia, Vanderbilt, Rice, Yale, and Stanford. Next, we have Joey Palacios, National Hispanic Scholar and AP Scholar with Distinction. Joey is a senior student who earned a qualifying score on five AP exams. He is interested in engineering, or in environmental engineering. He has applied at the University of Texas, Rice, MIT, the University of Houston, Texas Tech, and Tufts University. And lastly, Melanie Velazquez, AP Scholar with Honor. Melanie is a junior who earned a qualifying score, or a qualifying score on three AP exams. She is interested in business administration and management. Since she's a junior, she hasn't applied to colleges yet, but she is most interested in Rice University. Congratulations, and parents of these students, please stand so that you can be recognized
Hello, my name is Kelly Brannon, and I am the College Now Coordinator at South Houston High School, and I'm here tonight to honor some of our students for their achievements. So, we had administered 1,026 AP exams. The number of our students taking the exams was 476, and the qualifying scores was 150. So I'd like to honor first Francisco Acosta, AP Scholars with Honors. Francisco is currently the salutatorian of his class and plans to attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in civil engineering. Francisco looks forward to designing efficient city transportation systems and working on Next, we have Yulitza Barrigan, AP Scholars with Honors. Yulitza is currently the valedictorian of her class and plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in environmental science. Yulitza plans to use her degree to protect animals and nature in the midst of expanding human growth and development. Next, we have Anna Lopez, National Hispanic Scholar. Anna is currently ranked number 30 in her class and plans to attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in finance. Anna hopes to use what she learns to one day return to the Dominican Republic and start a business with her mom. Next, we have Cassandra Montez, AP Scholar with Honors. Cassandra is currently ranked 24 in her class and plans to attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in business. Cassandra likes the flexibility of this major and hopes to work for a company that invests in helping people. And finally, we have Jenny Nguyen, AP Scholar with Honors. Jenny is currently ranked number 11 in her class and plans to attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in business. Jenny hopes to start a nonprofit that will help her give back to her community one day. And parents, if you're a parent of one of our students, we'd like to, for you to stand and be recognized. We appreciate all of your support. They couldn't do it without you. So this concludes, I believe we're the last school, and thank you to everybody for coming. If we could recognize all of our students one more time with a big round of applause.
We certainly congratulate all of the students, and we thank all of you parents, because your students, your children are there because of your support. Thank you so much. At this time, if you'd like to leave, you're certainly welcome to. If you want to stay in for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do that also.
Hey, Madam President.
Yes.
Would you, did you notice how many people are going to Texas A&amp;M versus UT? Two losing years of football, and it changes the whole ball of wax. Cook 'em, Warren.
Yeah. You're in the right color.
That's right.
Only he and Karen.
Karen likes that.
I was liking it.
We have no public comments this evening, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
How many did we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keanu. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the Personnel Section, we have no administrative personnel. Next is consideration and possible approval of renewal of Aetna Contact-CSP number 16-028 for 2018. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion.
Just so you know, Bob Tracy is here from Gallagher. If you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Bob? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of medical stop-loss coverage self-funded health plan, CSP number 17-003.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of renewal of the On-Site Medical Clinic, RFP number Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of bus driver signing bonus for the Transportation Department.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Keanu, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. You will find in your board book Certified Personnel, and that's for information only. Next is the Educational Section. Consideration possible approval of Pasadena ISD Fred Roberts Middle School to enter into a federal work-study agreement with San Jacinto College South.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Keanu, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a contract with the City of Houston's Mayor's Anti-Gang Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is this going to be available in all of our schools or just those that are in the City of Houston?
Robert, it's just for your campus. Will you come to this and tell other campuses in Houston involved, or just I know here?
This is, this is a partnership that we've had for about five years now, and what we're doing is we're partnering them, with them financially, so that they'll provide us with a case manager who will provide services to all of our secondary campuses. Presently, they have a, they're working in, I believe, three of our, of our high schools and a large number of intermediate schools. Yes, ma'am.
So, they're throughout the district?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Okay. Fine. Thank you, Robert.
Yes, thank you.
Any, any other questions? Discussion, Ms. Roberts?
Have we seen activity, gang activity in the schools? I did notice some kids walking down the street the other day in very similar clothes, which used to be the norm back during the gang days years ago.
That's Troy's escorting Stewart back again. They're talking about gang activity, and I can tell you from being an administrator, it's gone down significantly from what we experienced in the 90s. We know we had a problem then. I'm not saying it's nonexistent, but what's, is there anything you'd like to add, Chief? I think our, our numbers and cases have significantly declined.
We know we've been here a long time, and we're seeing the problem be the children of the ones that we dealt with in the 90s. Drastically down, doesn't even compare.
Oh, sure.
The problem is nowhere near as real as it used to be in the 90s. There's always probably going to be a small group that wants to identify with that, and currently, what we usually see are the family members that are now entering our school district, but nowhere near what it was.
I noticed, the other day going down the road, I noticed a bunch of kids wearing the all same colored clothes, white pants, white shirt, and I was wondering if that's the new norm for the gangs, is that their colors now? You know, they did wear white with blue and white shirts for a while there, and depending if they were Bloods or Crips or whatever the case.
They might be painters.
Huh? House painters after the, after the storm. No, actually, we're not really seeing that much of a problem.
I don't think these were painters.
If anything, it's become more covert, more quiet and low-key than what it used to be. Again, back in the 90s, it was easy. Kids had it written all over their backpacks and easily all over their clothing. I think the school district has done a great job of pushing it out, educating, pulling the kids out of that environment, giving them other opportunities, getting them involved in other activities, and it's nowhere near what it used to be.
No, I don't think it is anywhere close to what we dealt with years and years ago, but this was close to a school where these kids were walking in a group, all wearing the same clothes, and I don't know if we have a painting co-op or not, but they were all wearing the same.
We've got a great fine arts department. Come on.
Well, it could be, but I don't think that, I think, I think there was a purpose for it, and that's the reason.
And we're still providing education, and we're also, of course, updating our administrators if we see trends or things that we need to call their attention to.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of state-approved innovative course, Sports and Entertainment Marketing II, for 2018-19 to be offered at all Pasadena ISD high schools. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, me too.
It sounds great. What area of the school is this going to come under? Is it athletics or?
It's a CTE pathway. So, Joyce, do you want to step up to the, it helps add to those opportunities for students and pathways.
This is a marketing class that fulfills a pathway for marketing. Sports marketing, two years ago, was a full-year course. When they changed the courses, they made it a half-a-year course, and now they've added the other half as an innovative course. So, the kids like it. It's, the high schools like to use it.
Do you know one of the teachers?
Oh, he used to be my son.
I thought he was still teaching it.
No, no. He's, no, he has 60, he has 70 co-op students now. He, he has no room, plus he coaches golf.
Used to be your son.
Yes. He's still there, but he's over the marketing department. But it's a, it's a very good class. The kids like it. They take the sports marketing, the social media, and the advertising all together.
Very good.
It's wonderful that we're bringing these things aboard.
Yes. And Tanya over here with the Director of CTE, she's been helping me create all these pathways to give kids opportunities.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of budget increase for the Special Ed Department, 2017-18 budget.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the intent to join the shared service arrangement between Pasadena ISD and Region 4 Regional Day School Program for the deaf, effective with the 2018-19 school year.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School debate team members to travel out of state to the Sun Vitational on January 11th through 15th, 2018, in Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Who's leading that group now? Instructors? What instructors do they have in that, in that group?
Andrew Barrett.
Okay. Is he the only one?
Assistant Janelle Adams.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Parkview Intermediates Career Readiness Students to Participate in the Close-Up Exper, uh, Experential.
I did the same thing.
Learning Program in Washington, DC from June 17th, 2018 through June 20th, 2018.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, and I didn't hear who the second. Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah.
Discussion.
I took part of this program when I was at Parkview back in the day, and I still remember it today. It's a great experience.
Good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We have no student achievements other than the ones that we just recognized, and did you have something?
There was some highlights that the ASCDs put together for you. We were trying this for the first time, just because there's so many great things going on. So, if you look on page 161 and 162, hopefully you like that format, because they want to brag on all the children across Pasadena ISD, so you'll be seeing more of that.
That's awesome.
Good. Y'all keep it up.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Can we get clearer pictures, because my eyes are really blind.
Get what?
Clearer pictures.
He wants his color.
A little distorted.
Forget it. Yeah, no. Yes, thank you. We're moving right along. Policy update and review, we have none. Financial section, consideration and possible approval of budget amendments. Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resolution authorizing an inter-local cooperative purchasing agreement with Santa Fe Independent School District.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of election of Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the order authorizing the issuance of Pasadena ISD Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds in one or more series, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the pricing officer to approve the amount, interest rates, price, including the terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Keanu, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
We do have our financial advisor, John Roebuck, here, and then also Tanya Fisher is here as well, so just in case you have any questions.
Any, anyone have any questions or anything they want to say? Hearing none, then. Let's move on, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Resolution Expressing Intent to Defeats Certain of the District's Outstanding Bonds.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of priority facility upgrade projects and funding by the 2011 Bond Contingency Pool.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of 2014 Bond Contingency Pool Funding of Fixtures, Furniture and Equipment FFNE for the Palmeroy Elementary School Replacement Project.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2014 Bond Contingency Pool Funding of Fixtures, Furniture and Equipment FFNE for the New Dobie High School Ninth Grade Campus Project.
Second.
Who, who said that? Was that you, Marshall? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by, who, who seconded it? Mr. Fernandez? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan. I'm sorry. Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none.
Yes, Kevin.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, no. Five votes.
Kevin, this is just about going to deplete the 2014 bond monies, isn't it?
Do you want to?
Ninety-eight thousand.
Will you come to the microphone, or will somebody say that? Well, I'll just say it. Ninety-eight thousand, because Hope's not here tonight, and we don't want to get in trouble. So, we'll make sure it gets on the recording for her minutes.
Are we, are we basically completed? We got all the furniture? We got everything over there? Franklin?
Working on furniture. There's an elevator.
Delivering that word on the elevator. I think they're coming to bar and finish that final, final inspection on that as far as I know.
You are going to get us in trouble with Hope, I'm telling you. So, the elevator is still an issue, but the furniture has been delivered on the first floor, and teachers are starting to go over and move into classrooms, little by little.
What's wrong with the elevator? It goes up?
Kevin, it's not, it's not going up and down just yet.
Do you want any part of that?
Actually, the elevator, there's nothing wrong with the elevator. It's, it's the TCO for the second floor.
And what is the TCO?
That's the Temporary Certificate of Occupancy. So, they just had to finish a few items before they could get that, to use the elevator to occupy it.
So, while you're there, Kevin.
Yes.
It's, the Ninth Grade Campus is just about complete.
Just about.
The plan is for parents to come over in December, and then students to start right after the holiday.
And how soon will we have a occupancy permit?
They were finishing up the stairs just this week, so I think by the end of the week, they'll call the, for the final inspection for the TCO.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, the construction update. Does anyone have any questions that has, have not already been asked?
How are we on the, are we about, where are we on our projects? They're just about done, all of them?
Yeah, we've got May Smith that's still on schedule, doing well. CTHS on schedule, finishing up that one, so, yeah, those are the, the last two remaining after Dobie 9th. And, and second phase.
Can you update on LF Smith because of the flooding?
Yes.
Not the flood, the storm.
All the repairs from the flooding have been completed, except for the library. We're waiting to replace the flooring in there during Christmas break.
What about books? What happened? Did a lot of the books get ruined?
We did have some.
Not a lot at LF Smith.
Not, not a lot.
But it's my understanding that there was full coverage from the contractor for those to be replaced.
Yes.
So, the school district didn't suffer any financial loss?
No, we submitted everything that was associated with that flood, even our, our overtime, that our custodians and maintenance people, so we submitted everything as part of that claim.
Great. Thank you.
And they haven't argued anything about it?
No. It's, it's the plumber's insurance company that's.
Right.
Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Where are we as far as getting feedback on Repair Thompson?
As far as pricing, met out there this afternoon. We've got color selected for paint, so the walls are ready to be painted right now. We've got flooring selected today, so it's about, we've got a quick ship on the flooring, so that'll be one week for the flooring to get here, and then six to eight weeks for so that'll be one week for the flooring to get here, and then six to eight weeks for total install of the flooring. We've got, the roof is underway right now, and probably will be finished in about two to three weeks for the roofing. We're reviewing all the HVAC, we've got doors ordered, we've got the gym floor, it's about to start, so we're doing well over there.
Can you estimate a dollar for the total repair?
I don't have that total right here, but I can get it for you.
You'll need to, just next time?
Yeah.
We're projecting February 15th, correct?
Correct.
Really?
Oh, wow.
That's great.
And has the flood insurance come through, or have we heard anything on this?
We've had John working diligently on the stuff, and of course, Kevin and his team working on the facilities, and we meet weekly with Barmore and that team, and we've gotten some initial payments, John, but as far as finalized numbers, we don't have anything that I'm aware of unless something's just recently happened, but they're working both angles, not just insurance, but FEMA as well, John. Nina had been marking that, and of course, the ASCDs, Rhonda and Alita have been a lot of help in that process as well, and so we're working diligently on it, with John and Kevin's team taking the lead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we'll move on to, we have no communications, no more, no public comments. Mr. Joyner, will you announce board member credits, please?
I will.
Will you give him his microphone? Thank you.
I'll give him his microphone.
Keep hoping. I hope happy.
Thank you. Pull it over a little bit.
Okay. It is now time to announce the continuing education credits received by the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees for 2017. Completing the annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member on the State Board of Education rules. The following information will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. First is update to the Texas Education Code. Vicky Morgan, Jack Bailey, Nelda Sullivan, Maricel Kehano, received two hours of required credit for the update to the Education Code at the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards Meeting with Dr. Robbie McGowan of Region 4 on September 27th, 2017. Kenny Fernandez and Marshall Kendrick received two hours of required credit for the update to the Education Code with Dr. Robbie McGowan of Region 4 at Pearland ISD, Pearland High School North Campus on October 11th, 2017. Fred Roberts received two hours of required credit for the update to the Education Code with Dr. Robbie McGowan of Region 4 at the Fort Ben ISD Central Office on November 15th, 2017. Team building, Vicky Morgan, Jack Bailey, Nelda Sullivan, Maricel Kehano, Fred Roberts, Kenny Fernandez, Marshall Kendrick, received the three hours of required credit for team building training on November 28th, 2017, at the Pasadena ISD Administration Building with Dr. Robbie McGowan of Region 4. Additional education, Vicky Morgan exceeds the requirement of five hours. Jack Bailey exceeds the requirement of five hours. Nelda Sullivan exceeds the requirement of five hours. Maricel Kehano exceeds the requirement of five hours. Fred Roberts exceeds the requirement of five hours. Kenny Fernandez exceeds the requirement of five hours. Marshall Kendrick exceeds the requirement of five hours. Records of the training received by individual board members are available for public inspection in the Superintendent's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we're going to suggest setting the date for the next regular meeting, Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Since we will not be having a December meeting, I certainly want to wish each and every one of you a wonderful Christmas and a great New Years. Thank you for all you do for our kids and for us individually. We love each and every one of you. So, at this time, there's no further business. To come before this board, I'm going to say that this meeting adjourned at, is that right? 7:55? Whoa.
Good work.
Seven, yes, 56. Okay, 7:56 PM, this meeting is adjourned.